Okay, it's. I'll try that again. It's six o'clock on May fifteenth, 2023, and I'll take call this meeting to order of the Chelmsford Select Board. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge?
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And I say it's America into a republic where which stands a nation under God. Okay. Okay, the first item is a joint meeting with the Cemetery Commission to fill a vacancy on the on the commission. Is there somebody from the Cemetery Commission that wants to take the podium? Somebody? Anybody? That's okay, take your time.
Jeff Hardy, Five Maple Ave, Chairman Cemetery Commission. We had asked to meet with you folks because we had a open spot that was created because of one of our members got elected to planning board and you can't hold, as you all know, you can't hold two elected seats. That was John Souza. So after an extensive search, we had asked Candy Chase if she'd be interested in joining us. And so we're in front of you today, ask for your approval.
Are there other members from the commission here?
Yes.
Could you state who's here?
Nancy Souza.
Just for the record, thanks.
Yes.
Okay, I guess we'll take nominations.
And Superintendent Dave Boyle is with us as well.
Okay.
I'll nominate Candy Chase for the position.
I'll second.
Are there any other nominations?
No.
Okay, vote to close them?
I'll make a I'll make a motion to close the nominations.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye.
It's a joint meeting, they have to vote.
Yep. You guys, aye.
Aye.
Okay. Seven zero. Okay, so we have a nominee and a second. George? Those in favor? George?
Yes.
Okay. Virginia?
I'm in favor of Candace.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, we can.
Yes. Seven oh, it sounds like it's a confirmation.
You have to have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the joint meeting?
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, public service.
I forget to scroll to documents.
What's that?
Documents. Scroll.
Okay, the first public service announcement is a proclamation for Memorial Day. So I'm going to read that. This is Town of Chelmsford Proclamation in recognition of Memorial Day, May twenty nine, 2023. Whereas Memorial Day, May twenty nine, 2023, has been set aside as the annual day of remembrance for those men and women who served our nation during times of conflict as members of the armed forces. And whereas, we pause this day to especially remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice of their lives to defend the freedom of all Americans. And whereas, we honor the service and sacrifice of all veterans of all wars and conflicts and join the living veterans of the Town of Chelmsford in expressing our gratitude to their fallen comrades. Now, now therefore, we, the Chelmsford Select Board, do hereby proclaim Monday, May twenty nine, 2023, as Memorial Day, 2023, and join all residents of the town in recognizing the deceased veterans of Chelmsford on this solemn day. Signed this fifteenth day of May, 2023, by the Select Board and sealed by Tom Clark.
Thank you. Good evening. Memorial Day is two weeks from today. So the Chelmsford Memorial Day observance will be, as you said, on Monday, May twenty ninth, in the Chelmsford Center. We're back in the center this year. The Merrimack Valley Vietnam Veterans will be the veterans' host organization. And we're happy to be bringing back the parade, although it's going to be a considerably shorter route. The parade will start at ten a.m. promptly at, from the parking lot next to CVS, Max and Leo's, on Route Four. We will proceed to the lights at the intersection of Route one twenty-nine, Billwicker Road, and we'll take a left and we'll go by the Chelmsford Center for the Arts. We'll take another left onto Academy Street and then come in the backside of the Common. And after, when we get back from the at the Common, we will have a Memorial Day program hosted by the Merrimack Valley Vietnam Veterans. Everybody's welcome. Everybody's welcome to join us in the parade. Ten a.m. sharp, just show up and you're welcome to attend. And the other note about Memorial Day is we will be putting the flags at all six of our Chelmsford Public Cemeteries within the next two weeks. Riverside, Pine Ridge, excuse me, Pine Ridge, which is our biggest one, will start on Saturday, which is on Forces' Day, with the help of scout volunteers. So if if there's anybody who has a problem with the flags not being up or et cetera, you can always call, call my office at nine seven eight two five zero five two three eight. But please keep in mind, all the flags should be up by Memorial Day weekend. Thank you.
I will see you then.
Thank you.
Okay, next is a notice about the Market on the Common. So please join us for the return of Chelmsford's Market on the Common, a farmers' and artisans' market. The market season begins May twenty seventh and will run every Saturday through October seventh on the Town Common from eleven a.m. to two p.m. Note the change of hours this season and also note there will there will be no market on July first. Market on the Common features fresh, locally grown produce, plants, and cut flowers, as well as artisan bakers and crafters, including fresh baked breads, cupcakes, and other baked goods, locally sourced honey and maple syrup, artisan sodas, as well as handmade jewelry, soaps, woodworking, and more. Can't wait to see you at the market. And the market is still accepting vendor applications. If you're interested, contact General Anson at nine seven eight two five four zero four four six for more information. And next is a celebration of Pride Month. So celebrate Pride Month with the Chelmsford Center for the Arts and Chelmsford Community Services. Don't miss this opportunity to celebrate our LGBTQ plus community during Pride Month. Presenting a celebration, a drag show on Saturday evening, June tenth, at seven p.m. Come join the fun with a variety of performers and celebrate Pride Month. Your show is for adults eighteen plus and will also have a cash bar available. To purchase tickets, you can go to chelmsfordarts.org and click on events or call the block's office at the CCA at nine seven eight two five zero thirty seven eighty or email cca@chelmsfordma.gov for more information. Next is a notification about our municipal open house, which is going to happen on Monday, June twelfth, from six to eight p.m. at the Chelmsford Public Library in the main meeting room. We want to hear about your favorite things in town, about services, events, municipal departments, and so forth, as well as those where we fall short. Find out more about how the town works and how you can make it a better place to live, work, and play. Bring your questions and suggestions. You'll be able to speak one-on-one with members of the Select Board and representatives from various committees. Find out what they do and how you can participate by joining a committee or helping out on the sidelines. Let us and also, we want you to tell us how we can communicate more effectively with the community. And light refreshments will be provided. Again, that's Monday, June twelfth, six to eight p.m. at the Chelmsford Public Library. And Chelmsford Ride is now in operation. It's now open to all adult residents, eighteen-plus years old. Transportation services throughout Chelmsford for medical appointments, grocery and pharmacy trips, and the surrounding towns for medical appointments. We also go to Emerson Hospital, Leahy Clinic, and Bedford VA Hospital. Hours of operation on Monday to Friday, two to six p.m. Call the transportation coordinator, Cindy Perinet, at nine seven eight six five four nine two four five for more information and to book a ride.
Thank you, Beth. Next up is public input. Does anybody have input for the board? Jeff, you'd like, please just state your name and address.
You bet. My name is Sean McGuigan and I live at seventeen Berkeley Drive. I am a member of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. At your March twenty-seventh meeting, the Select Board voted to make the greener supply choice the default option for the next Chelmsford Choice contract. With that vote, the Select Board made a commitment to increase the amount of green energy purchased from the current twenty-two percent state mandated requirement up to forty percent. This one decision would have made a tremendous impact in reducing the town's greenhouse gas emissions, more than any other project or initiative we could undertake, and at an economical price for our residents. You can imagine my surprise and disappointment when I learned that during the May first Select Board meeting, that commitment was overturned and the basic option became the Chelmsford Choice default. The town manager used high electricity prices received in a mid-April supply bid to reopen the Chelmsford Choice discussion, even as he himself called those high prices an anomaly. During the ensuing discussion, no one from the committee was present to provide any advice or context to the discussion, which would have been beneficial to all, but especially our newest Select Board member, who wasn't present for our March twenty-seventh presentation. The Select Board member who changed their vote did so with little or no explanation. The town manager rebid the electricity contract on May tenth, just several weeks after this market anomaly, even though we had up to three months to do so. Prior to the bid meeting, I emailed the town manager and asked for a postponement of the bid to allow the committee time to react to the higher electricity prices. Failing that, I requested that the town manager enter into a shorter contract to allow us to reevaluate electricity costs in a year and obtain Select Board and town residents' commitment to the greener option. Neither of my recommendations were acted on, and the town is sadly locked into the basic default option for the next two years. This is quite a setback, both to the CES Committee and the town reps who voted for this committee to be formed to advance green energy projects. I would ask the town manager and the Select Board to reconsider this decision and explore canceling the May tenth electricity contract. The town deserves better than just the state minimum. Failing that, I ask that the town put significant resources behind an opt-up campaign to educate residents on the importance of opting into the greener program and show their commitment to green power. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Amiro. I'm a town meeting representative and a founding member of CCAT, Chelmsford Climate Action Team. I'm here to give public input on the electricity supply aggregation procurement. I had been told that a green default had been approved at the twenty-seventh meeting. And as far as I know, none of us were made aware that the default enrollment option was up for reconsideration at the May first meeting. I've watched both on TV indeed, you know, since. About three years ago, Bern Kosicki and I were able to get a mid-tier option in the previous contract, thinking it would be easier to get folks to opt up to a less expensive green option than the one hundred percent greenest. Actually, that did not pan out. Out of a hundred, a hundred and forty-six went for the greenest and only sixty-eight went for the green. We also advocated strongly for a green default, but to no avail. Our only recourse was to try to get folks to opt up. And with Marla Patton's help of Peregrin, who's the town synergy consultant, CCAT had flyers, handouts, banners, sandwich boards created, and used them to communicate the benefits of opting up. But we knew it was a tough battle. We'd been told by the executive director of MCAN and the sustainability manager of NADIC that over ninety percent stick with the option they get. And in fact, at the twenty-seventh meeting, you all know that already. But, and just to give you a look, here's, here's an example of the type of... So we've already done this. We've already tried. And we put a lot of work into it with very little. So obviously, if you go with the the default option, unless you put a heck of a lot of money into it, we're going to have very little success. But let me stick to my script. Municipal aggregation has always been intended to promote greener electricity as well as provide cost savings, which is why it has the green options. Paul Coman told me that because a miniscule number of Chelmsford residents opted up, it shows that they remain in the program for cost savings. And I think most of you, some of you really believe that. But that may not be the case. Think of this. Why haven't other towns like Westford, Lowell, and Acton that automatically enroll everyone in a green option, why have they not heard an uproar and seen a mass opting down? Tom Teller of Westford just sent me an email confirming that there has been no uproar. There has only been a trickle of opting down, but they have seen a small, steady growth of opting up. And I think I'm just echoing some of Sean's sentiments. I mean, it just doesn't seem right that no stakeholders, GMA means green municipal aggregation, where the default is more than just the basic. And I don't know about you, but I mean, I never thought a C was a good grade. I think we should, want to strive to do better than just the minimum. It doesn't seem right that there are no stakeholders for GMA at that May, at that May first meeting. It doesn't seem fair that we never had a chance to question the overturning of the green default. I, we did communicate with Mark and he indicated he'd be out of town to May tenth. So, and on, but May, on May tenth, Paul signed the contract. And so it was like, no chance. When I asked Paul why he didn't wait, he said he was following your directive. And, and that nothing had changed since the emails. I sent out an email. Thank you very much, Virginia, saying it was a thoughtful one. I think it was. So he felt that he had a clear directive to do it and did it. I guess, I guess we should have implored George and Aaron for a meeting. But we didn't, I mean, I didn't know and I don't think the CEAS committee people knew that it was actually going to go down the tenth and that was it. We'd have no chance. Okay. Now, he mentioned.
We are going to try to keep this to three minutes, if you could.
All right. I mean, and let me just see if I can find something really. Okay, Mark's reason for voting, though, the state, because of the state mandates, the gradual increasing minimum percentage is in line with the state's net zero goal. So it's in line with our net zero goal. I asked the executive director of Green Energy Consumer Alliance, and he sent a reply, which I forwarded to Mark. And so essentially, the state also, here, here's a good idea. I don't know if anyone's brought this up. We could have gone for a less green, a paler shade of green. If you had only added five percent Class One RECs, it would cost a lot, you know, maybe two tenths of a penny or a dollar per month for an average household. Another thing is the state's not just saying net zero by twenty fifty, they've set a goal of cutting emissions in half by twenty thirty. If we lock this in for two years, so then we'll only have five years left to cut the emissions in our town in half. Also, when we tell folks about the virtues of, you know, transitioning to EVs for reducing emissions, they rightly point out that the grid isn't green enough yet. So why should they rush? So this was one step we could do to help accelerate the greening of the grid.
Tom, if you could try to wrap up, please.
Reducing emissions means not burning fossil fuels in our buildings and cars. But the amount of emissions saved is diminished if the electric supply is dirty. So where where is the green in this town that people are always saying Chelmsford is? We were a leader in adopting municipal aggregation, but we've fallen behind in adding emissions savings to cost savings. Our next-door neighbors, Acton, Lowell, and Westford, have green defaults, and their leaders were able to make decisions that not only impact their residents, but the whole world. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Peter Spawn, twenty-four, Fenwick. I'll be short. Forty-year resident, I'm the vice chair of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, and I'm coming with a slightly different message. I echo everything that's been said so far, and we don't need to rehash that. But I'm here to encourage you to embed sustainability, climate resiliency, climate adaptation, all these good buzzwords that a lot of us, you know, aren't really sure what means. But I'm here to encourage you to adapt that current thinking into the strategic planning that you're starting to do, and to also give it thought on the master plan update that's happening. I think Evan is leading a team to take a look at the master plan. The climate is changing. It is going to affect us. These carbon emissions and the green choices and all of that is a huge impact on trying to temper some of what we're facing. The things you're hearing in the news, fires out west, floods, all that stuff, that stuff's real. And it does have an impact on Chelmsford, and it will, that I believe we don't quite understand yet. So I'm just here to encourage us to start putting this on our radar, think a little bit about it. And the good news is, there's lots of state and federal grant money over the next ten years to help us with becoming greener. So, thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Padraig O Pilepin, Jairich Leng, Committee Chair, CES. First of all, as has been stated, the committee was given no notice. I'd like to state on record that it reflects very poorly on the Select Board and especially the Select Board Chair and Town Manager, and maybe not the Town Manager specifically, but on Select Board Chair, to have not invited the committee, knowing that it was on agenda. We are an advisory committee, we recognize that. The decision is all of the Select Board, and the agenda is controlled by the Select Board Chair. But we should have been accorded that much basic respect if this was going to come back to a discussion. Second, I want to make some corrections on record, if I'm not mistaken. I believe the newest member, Select Board Member Erin Drew was present in the audience on March twenty-seventh, sitting on Row Three, Chair Number One, by the door approximately, if I'm not mistaken. So she was aware of the conversation, in a sense. The argument, if I'm not mistaken, made by Member Drew was that people do not read their letters, a very similar discussion that had happened on March twenty-seventh. I will not go into reasons why, as to anybody who else, I do not know who else changed the votes, but it was. But as has been pointed out, the challenge of creating a policy-level decision has already been solved by, partially solved by the state, in that they have given guidance and mechanisms to make this movement to be a net zero transition happen. If we do not choose to do those very basic actions, and we actually have not come up with these, what we thought was more specific for Chelmsford, the tuning of it, of the MAPC-based plan, was to move it slightly up so we could buy ourselves a little bit more time to get at the basics of where it is. In terms of the letter that was posted and given to you, by looking at the magnitude numbers, yes, everybody gets scared about that. But the real mathematics behind it was the delta, the delta of a hundred dollars or a hundred and fifty dollars. As was stated in the letter that was submitted to the Select Board as part of the discussion or the basis of discussion, the numbers that were quoted were much high, and the tagline was, this is a market anomaly. Therefore, the, when the real numbers came out, in fact, the three-year option was a cheaper option with a more percentage possible for slightly more money than what has been locked in two years. This obviously comes down to the direction given by, according to the mail sent to me by Chair Caroda on May fourth, that you have directed on May first meeting. And of course, your email to me was on May fourth, I believe, on a Thursday, three days after, give or take. So you did take time after things had been set in motion and you had gone on vacation, I believe, at that point. So there was no communication possible or anything until March, May tenth, when the bid was happened. So I believe on record, I would like to say, at least as a due process, do not do this to any other committee in the future, even though it is an advisory committee, a volunteer committee. And I understand you're all volunteers doing the right thing for the community, but at least accord the basic courtesy of involving us in a discussion. We are putting our hours at the best of the intentions of, with the people, trying to make sure that everybody saves money in the long run. I can almost vouch for this. Death, taxes, and price rises are a constantly rising factor. It is an assured factor. So anybody who says that, oh, in two years or three years, the market dynamics changes, or there is an uncertainty in energy prices will come down collapsing, let's keep a one-dollar wager for that and see who's right on that. I think we may have locked ourselves into it potentially. It is very clear, even from the past years, in the current contract, we could get sixty-two percent at about eleven point eight cents, sixty-two percent green energy at eleven point eight cents, and we would have actually preferentially mitigated more carbon than we have. Now we're only getting the best deals, we're getting at forty percent, which means clean energy requirements are on the increase. I would also say that there is possibilities that legislatives or legislature will take cognizance that a town like Chelmsford did not go beyond in its depth and take leadership positions and penalize Chelmsford for not being advanced and therefore. In fact, there may be people who may campaign for disincentives for Chelmsford. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? They say none, moving to the next committee vacancies.
Okay, as of today, we have the following committee vacancies. There's one vacancy on the Board of Appeals, one vacancy on the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, one vacancy on the Commission on Disabilities, four vacancies on the Community Action Program Committee, two vacancies on the Council on Aging Board, one vacancy on the Holiday Decorating Committee. The Parade Committee welcomes all applicants. There's one vacancy on the Permanent Building Committee and one vacancy on the Recycling Committee. If you're interested in any of these, in a position or anyone at any of these boards or committees, you can fill out an application online or through the Town Manager's office.
Okay, hang on a second. Kind of locked up here.
It'll let you escape?
Hmm?
There you go.
No, it's, hang on a second.
Try to page down from that mode.
Yeah, it's just stuck.
You want me to take it?
Hang on one second. May have grabbed the other one. Hang on. Yeah, do you want to?
If you're, if you're frozen, I can take it.
Yeah, it's frozen. Hang on one second.
We can.
It'll freeze up. Well, we can go to the next one on the licenses. Common Victular License, Little Z's Incorporated, fourteen Fletcher Street. Is anyone here?
Yeah, you should be okay.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah.
Thank you. I don't know why that did that.
Hi, Dan Rokus, Ten Cliff Road.
Okay. Do you want to go through your application or?
Basically, I'm just adding two tables, eight seats.
To an existing?
To an existing business.
Okay. Anyone have questions?
So this is just when we approved the license, the last time you didn't have the indoor seating?
Correct, I didn't have the indoor seating. Yes.
We didn't have to approve the license because they didn't have indoor seating.
We approved, we approved something.
The passway through to connect it to Zesty's, the dining room.
Yeah, yeah. I have no further questions.
Any other questions, discussion? Take a motion?
Make a motion, we approve a Common Victular's license for Little Z's operating at fourteen Fletcher Street, Suite Four.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Suite Four.
Now I'll second.
Okay.
All those in favor? Aye. Five zero. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next up? Next up? Change of manager, change of officers, all alcoholic beverages, general on premises license, Town Hall Advisory Committee, doing business as C C A.
I don't see anybody here.
Is there anybody here? Nobody on there? No? Is anyone? I don't know. I expect, I don't know why there's nobody here from the license. This is, this is the result of a change in manager and, and change of directors because of the, obviously, change in the executive director of the C C A, Lauren Cochran, and then obviously, we've had some change on the directors. And with the filing with the state, we have to find it with an updated list of directors and the updated manager. This was all handled, Mike Rigney was in last week with Christine, Christina Bruce going over the application. I, I have no explanation why there's nobody here from the committee this evening, but again, it's a procedural process in terms of keeping our license current as we would require for any license holder in the community. Any questions or discussion?
No, it seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, seeing none, take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve a change of manager and change of officers and directors for the all alcohol beverage license at the C C A, which is managed by the Town Hall Advisory Committee.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye. Five zero. Next, reports and presentations. Kristen Dillon and Bill on Junie's?
Hello, I'm Kristen Dillon, 8 Lantern Lane. So I want to thank you all for hearing our presentation about Junie's Place at Friendship Park. So this will be an expansion to the two to five area currently at Friendship Park in Roberts Field in memory of my daughter, Juniper, who passed away on December 30th of this past year. So a little bit about what we're hoping for, for Junie's Place. So as I mentioned, it is an expansion for children in the two to five area. Really, it's going to be focused on an inclusive play area with port in place surfacing to maximize play for our children of all abilities. We are going to have a few different options for children, including a sensory area, a wall, seesaw, and some other things that really we had Junie in mind as we were planning. Our budget is of $145,000 because of the port in place surfacing, but we do have some tiered budgets, and so based on our fundraising and what we meet, we can have some various options. So we are planning to fundraise through January of 2024 and hopefully have an opening of summer 2024. So it is in, located inside the Friendship Park Playground, if you go into the main entrance right in the right, which was originally, hopefully earmarked for an expansion to begin with. So if you'd like more information, you can go to juniesplace.org. We're also featured in the Boston Globe this past Sunday, which was really exciting. So let me tell you a little bit about Junie, which is the reason I'm really here. So Junie was a ray of light. She was born in April of 2020 during a really difficult time in all of our lives, and yet this child brought smiles to everyone that knew her. She was just happy. My mom used to joke that are people born with a sense of humor, because Junie truly had one. She was beloved by anyone that met her, and one of our favorite places to visit was Friendship Park, and I always had Mondays off with Junie, and she and I would go every Monday, and on the weekends with her older sister, and her favorite was the bumpy slide, which is why we have that picture posted everywhere. And she also loved the swings. So unfortunately, on December 30th, Junie didn't wake up. She went to bed well, and she didn't wake in the morning. And so we're also advocating for sudden unexplained death in children, which is something that I did not know about until losing my own child. And I'm also a psychologist and hospice, and so you'd think that I might know something about that. So to really celebrate her life, which is what I want to do, I want to celebrate her life and, and not focus so much on her death, we really wanted to do something for the children in our community. And so this is why we opted to expand the playground, because this was a place that was so dear to Junie, and really will bring friends of all ages joy for however long the playground exists. So you can go on to the next slide. So just in terms of building Junie's Place, so we've been partnering with the town of Chelmsford and the Friends of Roberts Field, as well as the Chelmsford Mothers Club, who's been helping us as well, and we designed Junie's Place together. And so the hope is that the Department of Public Works will purchase and install and maintain the new equipment, and Friends of Roberts Field is helping us with the fundraising project. So we're accepting donations by credit card check, and they can do so at juniesplace.org or mail checks, as you can see. So we also have sponsorship levels available, and that we plan to identify sponsors on signage at Junie's Place. So if you want to email me, you can email me at drkristindillon@juniesplace.org. So designing Junie's Place, as we mentioned, we really had Junie in mind, we did this, it was a family, and went through and picked out some of the options we really thought that she would love. So we have some items to climb on, to climb in, sensory wall, we saw where lots of friends can play together. And again, it will have that port in place surfacing, which is, they have, we have some at the current playground, as well as the signage for sponsors' names and a metal park bench and some trees. So here are our tiered budget options. So as you can see, depending on where we meet our goal in terms of fundraising, that we do have some options if we don't hit the full $145,000, that we have option one, two and three, that either has less equipment or less of the port in place surfacing, depending on what we're able to do. So the other piece that we've really done is promote a lot of awareness for sudden unexplained and death in childhood. And so Paul was gracious enough to light up the Town Memorial, blue and yellow, in honor of S U D C for March, which was the Awareness Month. The governor also signed a proclamation this past year to honor this as S U D C Awareness Month. We're seeking grants and going to foundations for donations, as well as corporations, and just really crowdsourcing and funding. So we also have some exciting events planned, so we've decided to call what's listed as Junie's Week is Junie's Joy. And so this will happen from June 16th to June 30th, where we'll be partnering with local businesses and hopefully asking them to donate some proceeds and profits, while at the same time really encouraging people to shop locally, as well as bring in new folks to our community. We also are thinking about having the Harlem Wizards, which are formerly the Globe Trotters, come and do an event, as well as some other events, including Cars and Cappuccinos at Mercedes-Benz of Burlington, potentially partnering with the local photographer and having a booth at the Country Fair. So that is Junie's Place. Bill, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Bill Askenberg, 185 Westford Street, I'm also the chair of the Friends of Roberts Field. So we've been actively fundraising for this project for about six weeks now.
Yep.
And happy to say that we're, we're at just about the $50,000 goal, so we're about a third of the way there. So we've, we've had really good, really good reception from the community. A lot of people are really excited about it, and we're on the, we're just about ready to start our outreach program for other donations and stuff too, from businesses and local folks in the community. So I would just encourage people to, to reach out, to go to juniesplace.org, and if they're interested in donating, to please, to please donate either by check or through our PayPal link that we have there. I also wanted just to point out too, I'm sorry, to, that we've been working with the, the D P W, with Steve Callahan and Christine Clancy, to, we worked with them to develop the program and to sort of work out through, work through all of the details of getting the, the playground designed and set up and get the process going. So it's been a true community effort to try and get this, to get this going.
And I just want to say that I, our family feels truly held by the Chelmsford community. We had a bubble event on what would have been Junie's third birthday on April 2nd, where members of the community, the friends, family gathered, including many of the police officers, some of which, some of whom were first responders the day that Junie passed away. And so it's just been such an outpouring of love for all of us, and we are just so incredibly grateful for living in Chelmsford and for what everybody has done for us, and feel equally so that we're able to do this for Junie in her honor. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think it'll be a really nice addition for the community, so thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, next up is discussion. Oh, no. It's the Director of Public Works, Christine Clancy. Go over the tiered rate schedule for sewer.
Good evening. Yes, I have an update tonight on the proposed F Y 24 sewer rates. Next slide, please. Quick overview of the agenda. We'll go over the sewer division, the current sewer rate summary, we'll also talk about how that compares to other communities, our current rate structure, and then I'll talk about what I'm proposing for F Y 24, which is a tiered rate structure, which we currently do not have, and then you can answer any questions. Next slide, please. So this was presented at town meeting and at some previous meetings to the select board. This here is our budget for F Y 24 as present, so the sewer division is part of the D P W. It is enterprise fund, so enterprise is really funded internally through the revenue we bring in through mostly users, also some fees, and then the fee also, we obtain a fee through Tingsborough. So overall, the budget for this F Y 24 is an 8.3 increase from last year. The slide was previously presented, but just want to go over some of those highlights, some of the reasons for the 8.3 increase. We did see an increase in the major maintenance from, for grinder pump installations needed at Katrina and Southwell, also gasoline price increase. I know right now the gasoline price is not as severe as it was last year when we put into the budget, but we still are carrying some increases across the D P W budgets just for gasoline price increases. One of the largest increases was under our contract services item, and that is because we are doing some force main assessments. As you all know, we had the Southwell force mains break, we've also had some other more relatively minor, but we are looking to evaluate all of our force mains, looking at a 10-year plan. So the first would be for forced main assessments on Richardson Road and Southwell, and that's estimated at $387,000. We also adjusted the debt service. And recently, the 10-year pump station capital improvement plan was presented, and that includes really upgrading our last 14 pump stations, so that has also been shown in the budget. And then lastly, just, there was an 100,000, or estimated $100,000 increase in the Lowell user fee, and really, as their fees go up, that really does trickle down to us, and we do also pass on some of the fees to Tingsborough, but that's just a small percentage. Next slide, please. So our current rates are per 1,000 gallons, and there's no, it's, it's not a flat fee, it's per 1,000 gallons. We have residential, commercial, industrial. As you can see, the residential is 5.07 and then $1.05. That $1.05 was established when we, when we built the sewer out from 60% to 100% to bring the town to full sewer, and that is something that is really seen as like a capital debt service. And right now, I think it's targeted for F Y 20, uh, sorry, F Y 30, I think, potentially to complete, but we still carry that cost. So that $1.05 goes to pay off that capital service, does not go to what I just presented in terms of our operation budget for, for sewer. So the fees, this is the fees that we have, and this is published on our D P W website. We also do have a minimum annual bill of $81, and we have 91 users in town that have well water, and so we, because a lot of our bills, all of our, remaining of our bills, we get based on water usage, but if you have your own well, we, we have to look more for their well water use. So we have a annual flat fee of $284, $84. And then we bill two times a year, so every six months. So the average residential annual sewer bill is $406, the average commercial annual sewer bill is $2,000, and the average industrial annual sewer bill is $17,600. Next slide, please. So, so what we look at each year is we need to make sure that we have enough revenue in to cover the enterprise fund. So this is what analysis we just recently did right around town meeting, before town meeting. And as you can see, so the total projected revenue that we're looking at based on our, just our recent usage, and our compared to F Y 24 budget, we actually have a budget shortfall, shortfall of $565, $669. Typically, in the past, we've just taken that amount and then increased everyone's fee by a certain percentage, and I think the last update was F Y 21 or F Y 22, and then before it was, it was in the year 2016. So when we look at that, everyone across the board, residential, commercial, industrial, would see a fee in there, the increased fee would be 10%. Next slide, please. So looking at other communities, a lot of communities have shifted towards a tiered rate structure. There are still, so here shows all the, not all, but some of the neighboring communities. What I did is I took our average usage and plugged in their utility, their, with their numbers to see what their bill would be. And so Bilrika averages 384, and then if you all the way up to Tuxbury, it's 764. So it does vary, but I would say Chelmsford is still on the lower side compared to all these communities. Draken, Tingsborough have flat fees, so no matter what your usage is, you pay one fee. But if you look at Bilrika, North Andover, Lowell, Tuxbury, they have tiered rates, and so if you use less water, you pay, you pay less. Tiered rates is beneficial because it really does promote water conservation, which is good environmentally, but also, I think, for us too, looking at, we do have a sewer capacity issue, so if there's any ability for people to use less water, that we would see it lessen our system. Next slide, please.
Excuse me, Christine. Can I, so what you said is, this chart represents Chelmsford usage plugged into the given community's rate structure?
Yes, because I can't, I didn't know what their average bill was, I didn't have that information, so, yes, exactly. So what I did is I took our average residential, this is only for residential.
So if I lived in Tuxbury, I would be paying on average 764 per year?
Correct, for the 406. So the average use, I think, was like 66,000 gallons, so when I plug that into the residential rate, you can see these different numbers. Obviously, for Draken and Tingsborough, no matter what, for residential usage is, is the same. So yes, that, that is what I did. And also, just want to highlight that our Chelmsford Water Utility does do a tiered billing rate for water. So it's, not only is it prevalent in the sewer community, but also in the water community, you see that's based on usage.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. So now looking to, so what I wanted to do is see, how could we, how could we provide a tiered structure? And this is our, our proposal. As you can see in this, so every six months, we would, we would still continue with our billing. You have tiers one through four. This is paired, if you look at the usage that, or the Chelmsford Water, the Chelmsford Center Water, they, they do four times a year. So I looked at what their tiers were, and I did mimic that in terms of usage. But this would be for the sewer. So current residential would go up from, for tier one, so if you use 0 to 40,000 gallons, it would go up from 5.07 to 5.48. And then on the tier four, where if you're a much larger user, it would go from 5.07 to, to 6.08. And it also, to clarify, is based on, it's tiered. So if you use 60,000 gallons as a resident, you would pay 0 to 40 in the tier one, but then that 20,000 gallons you would pay in tier two, so it's incrementally increasing. We still would apply the $1.05 that has been calculated into it, so just to show, and yeah, we also looked at adjusting our minimum residential six month bill in the well water flat fee, just to kind of correlate with some of those increases that we're proposing. And I have that listed here. But in, if you look at the averages, so the average, based on this tier structure, like I said, across the board, everyone would see a 10% increase. Now residential would see a 6.7% increase. It shifts some of the, the percent increase to the larger users. So your bill would go from 406 to 433 as the average user. The average commercial annual sewer bill would go from 2,000 to 2,188, so a 9.4% increase. And then their industrial, it does shift, we do have some very large users in town, so they would see more of an increase. So that average bill went from 17,600 to 20,522, or a 17% increase. But I think this does promote water conservation, as you can see, not just in Chelmsford Water, you're seeing it across the, across the area, it's becoming common. So I think it's something that we would want to, that we're proposing, and so we would implement this July 1st. We do have to do some adjustments in our billing system, so we would actually take the June billing, just to do a dry run, just to make sure we can work out all the tweaks, and then we would start putting all the, some type of insert in the July 1 billing, and that would take place July 1. Any questions?
So Christine, do you have any idea how many residents would be in tier three or tier four, based on their current usage?
I'd have to, so we have a total of over 10,000 accounts, so when I went through, I'd have to check how many, so tier three- So when I went through, I'd have to check how many, so tier three is, when I look at the average bill, I mean, they, there are some, but it's minimal. Um, I would say it's, as far as tier three, you're looking at less than 10% probably.
Okay. Yeah, I wouldn't guess it'd be very many.
It's no, it's not too many. There are some, some high users, um, but most people, that's why our, so when you take our average out of all, uh, all 10,000 plus count, I think it's closer to 11,000 accounts. Um, the average is 66, just 67,000 gallons. So you have a lot of people that are, you know, zero to 100,000 gallons, and then you start to have more people that trickle in between 100 and 300. And then you have some outlier, then you have, or really 100 to 200, then you have a very small percentage that are in that tier three, tier four. So I would, I could double check, but I would say it'd be less than 10% and might even be less than 5%.
Yeah, I, I would guess not very many, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Just a quick question. You may have mentioned it. How did you, how did we get to the 284, 84 for the well users?
Oh, so it, uh, that was a calculation done many, many years ago.
So I figured.
I could not enti- it was based on a gallons per day use. What that use was based on, I, I didn't know exactly why, but it was based on a gallons per day estimate times 365 day. It was trying to estimate their usage and then apply some, um, fee structure to it years ago. So that, so as you can see, some of the, so the six-month billing is proposed to go from 40, 50 to 40, $40.50 to $45. Um, and then it goes, it had, we have an update for commercial, industrial. When you look at the well water flat fee, we, we asked, we just were trying to bring it a little closer towards our average use, um, but still not be too substantial of an increase. Uh, so that 284 was something that was developed years ago, based on a usage.
I was done. No, I was done. I think.
Any other comments, questions? Thanks a lot, Christine.
Thank you.
And Darlene, next up on the FY23 budget.
Good evening.
Hi.
Um, tonight I'm going to present where we are through, um, April 30th of, um, the fiscal year of 23 budget update. Um, if you want to just go to the next slide. Um, just give you a little bit, uh, where we're at on some of the line items in our revenue budget. Before we start talking with revenue, um, we're through April, we're about 93% um, collected of our 152 million dollar budget. So we're well within our targeted, um, benchmark percentage of the 83%. So we're doing very well, um, this year. I can see that we're, the revenues are coming in very strong. Um, some of the line items, and the larger ones on local receipts, we always have our motor vehicle excise tax. Um, we've actually collected 95.6% of our 5.35% budget. Uh, to date, we've collected, um, 5.1 million dollars. This is 99% of the collection from prior year, um, and we're 95% of what we're collecting this year. We also just had a small commitment for in April, which hasn't been collected yet, about $500,000. So we'll be able to be hitting that 5.3, um, budget number that we, um, have for this fiscal year. So again, we're seeing motor vehicle. I think the prices of vehicles, um, are driving some of these, keeping this, keeping this steady. Um, I think some people are buying electric vehicles, which are a little bit more expensive when they're buying, some of them are buying vehicles. Uh, so we're just still seeing motor vehicle excise staying strong. I think, um, of course, there was a shortage, but even with the interest rates rising, I think just the cost of vehicles alone, um, have gone up. So it's just driving these. Because the, the way that mo- motor vehicle, it's always heavy at the beginning, the first five years of your excise bills are always at the highest. Um, looking at our local meals tax and revenue for the first, uh, for the first three quarters, uh, we've collected $610,000. This is about $39,000 under the figure that we've budgeted for, but we are probably likely to, uh, get about $190,000 in within the next quarter, so we'll be able to make that. So the meals, the, the meals tax is much stronger than it was in the previous year. People are back out feeling comfortable being back in restaurants than it was in the previous year. Uh, hotel and room occupancy tax for the first three quarters. Um, again, we're, we're, we're going to be exceeding that budget. Uh, it's 15% higher than the prior year. Again, the state is still housing some homeless people in our, um, in our local hotels, which, um, bring, we do get collection from the state for that, from that. Uh, but we're seeing those numbers coming in, um, strong too, so that's always good news. Um, rental income, if you just look at that number from the prior year, it's down. And that's because last year, we, for this fiscal year, the buses that were parked over at the forum are now gone and they're over in Katrina Road. So you're just, if you're trying to compare that number from this year, we're not getting rental income from the, um, from the buses that are, that were parked. We used to get a fee from them when they were parked at the forum, and this year they're not. Um, but one good thing is that the town offices now are now open. We weren't open last year, um, at the beginning of the fiscal year to, to rentals for anybody who have the gym because of COVID. But now we're all back open. We were seeing those rental fees come back, people with basketball and, um, volleyball and things like that. People are renting the gym downstairs, so that's good news. In terms of investments, uh, that number has significantly increased from prior year. I think the rise in the market rate with the market stabilizing, we're seeing an improvement in that, uh, investment market, thank goodness, because of, uh, this time last year, we were actually in a deficit of $52,000. Uh, we do mark to market, so we actually have to book what we, what the market's making. Um, so this year we're seeing a significant increase, which is, is nice to see that, because I don't like to see negatives in my revenues. Uh, miss the miscellaneous, if you look at the miscellaneous revenues, it looks very extremely high. We, that's basically the big number in there is the solar racks, the S-Rex. Um, we've exceeded that budget already by $525,000. Um, I'm sorry, by the, by 355,000. We're seeing an increase. Um, we saw a big increase in solar generation this year. Um, we didn't have a lot of snow. When the snow is on those panels, you're not generating as much solar. That does have effect. But we also have done some, um, our energy manager has done some sales. They actually can sell back, um, some solar credits back to the grid. So we've done those. Anytime that he's, um, able to see an advantage to do that, we actually sell back if we can do that. So we've done some sales, which actually helps bring in some additional revenue. Um, and then just on the, just a non-rec- non-re- non-recurring revenues increase. We've had a couple of sales of town-owned land, um, and we're actually receiving those opioid settlements. Though that money that we're getting in from the opioid settlements actually go to the general fund. Um, we then, um, will, any free cash at the end of the fiscal year, we'll vote that to town meeting, taking a small portion of whatever the money was collected opioids, and, and, um, designate that to the health department, because that's really their money. But the Department of Revenue requires us to take this in as general fund money, um, non-miscellaneous revenue. So that's how we have to handle that.
So we, we take it in as general fund and then because it has a specific purpose under the terms of the settlement, then it gets moved after?
Mm-hmm. Yep. So we would do that in the fall when the free cash gets certified, then we would just, we would move that. Uh, property tax remains solid. We're, you know, right, right within, um, um, for property tax. And we, uh, usually have a 99% collection rate at the end of the fiscal year for that. Um, I don't see any issues, um, for the end of the fiscal year for any of these revenue components. Um, they're all, everything looks very strong, even the smaller ones, where the fees, um, permitting fee, we're a little less than, um, we were less, just a little less than we were last year. But we're still like going to make our number, um, looking, just looking at some revenue that's just come in, that John has just, um, that the Treasury Department has reported to me in May. We've just, we've gotten another $200,000 to $300,000 worth of revenue just coming in. Um, again, it's nothing, no big projects, but they're just people doing, it's now the spring, people pulling permits. There's some, you can go around seeing, um, additions being done and some houses being built and things like that. So we're seeing, we, we should have no problem with that number either. So I don't see any, um, again, any of those line items in our revenue have any issues. I think this, we've, this year's been very good, strong revenue sources. If, um, if you want, these are just, I, what I did is I actually give you all the line items, um, in the report, just to show you where we are from prior year to where we are to budget. Uh, we're looking at expenditures. Again, we're within, um, our 83% expended through April. We've actually, um, only expended about 70, 76, 77% of the budget at this point. There are five more payrolls to go to get us to the end of the fiscal year, and there's 11, uh, more ex- ex, what we, what we call expenditure warrants. So we run warrants every week and the school department runs them bi-weekly. We're allowed to run fiscal, the fiscal year 23, but, um, warrants into the, the last one I can run is 15th, uh, 15th of July. Um, so there's, we give the departments time to get their, but to get those last invoices in, that they, any purchases they made in late June can get them in through July. So we do have 11 more warrants that we'll be running through the fiscal year, uh, for expenditures. And what I start doing is start sending weekly budget reports to all the department heads, uh, so they know exactly where there are, where they are, um, with their budgets. And I, um, monitor them very closely from now until June 30th. And these are just the reports. You'll see, um, again, they're just, they're by, uh, departments, um, and where they are with their budget. We did have, you'll see, there's, um, there's a column in there that has the town meeting votes. So there's the, the adjustments that we just, uh, was approved at town meeting for, for library. There was public works, um, there was, um, some public safety. So you'll see those are the, actually the budget, whether they're for expenditures or, um, for salaries. Um, so I don't have any, does anybody have any questions on the, the budget again? Everybody is, is fine. Um, there's nobody that's, we've taken care of any, any deficits that they thought they were going to have through the fiscal year at town meeting, and they can't go over that. What I did do, and I'm not going to go in a lot of detail in, in, um, Christine just did a very good job talking about sewer enterprise. What I thought what I would do is show you just a couple of the enterprise. I've only just did the, the sewer and stormwater. But these, she's talking about 24, and this is where we're, we are not right now at, um, for fiscal 23. Uh, the revenues are, are collected, um, are about $81,000 over what's actually been expended. Um, so we're, you know, we're looking fine in there. Again, we're, we'll, we, we monitor these. Um, there will be additional revenue that will come in from the sewer users. And as you come in in June, we see some, uh, we have some small commitments that are being done now that will come in in June. The, um, so with, there's usually never a problem. We're probably going to see, we're not seeing, uh, you know, a huge free cash amount with this, with, with, um, sewer enterprise. So if you're looking at it right now, it's based, it's truly based on revenue over expenditures, is how they're really, how they really work. Um, so right now they would have, if we were going to close the books today, they would have a free cash number of $81,000 would be added to their, their, um, undesignated fund balance. They're currently, and I do have, I just want to, where they are currently. Um, currently they have an undesignated fund balance of $843,000. That, again, if they, that is to be used for anything that they need to do for a sewer project, or they need to buy, um, vehicles or anything like that, equipment. Those have to be, of course, has to be voted at town meeting. What was added to that free cash last year was $262,000. So as you can see, is they don't get, that's not a huge free cash number that they get at the end of the fiscal year. Um, it fluctuates in what it is. Their revenue last year, uh, was a total of, um, 5, 5,072, and their expenditures were 4.9 million dollars. Uh, current, like I said, currently we're at, the revenue's at 4.973, and the, and the, um, and the, their, their expenditures are at 4.912. So they're just like, just small amounts. Um, I think, um, going forward, and she was just talking about tier rate. Tier rate is definitely going to help this account. They're going to need that if they're going to be doing bigger projects, um, and have larger expenditures that they're going to be needing, because we're seeing that, that this is what's happening in these, in their expenditure budget, that it's, um, costing them more money to run them, to run business with the sewer enterprise. Uh, stormwater. Um, they're doing very well. There's, there's really no issue. Their expenditures look like they're, like they, like, oh, they have a lot more money to go ahead and spend. But what, a lot of, with the stormwater, their work is more spring-driven. Um, so they're out there now, they've been, um, doing all of the, the base cleanings, and they're doing all of the drainage works and things like that for stormwater. So during the winter months, they're not really going, there's not a lot of expenditures, because the work's not really being done where it's being done right now. So we'll see a lot of their expenditures now for May and June coming through there. Uh, because right now their revenue is collected as 1.7, but their expenditures are 1.3, which is giving them like an, a, a, a delta of three, like 317,000 dollars. Um, again, their, their undesignated fund balance to total is 302,000, but their addition last year was just $90,000. So again, it's not, they're just, they run a very close, um, a very close budget of money coming in and out. Not a lot left. Um, if you want to go to the next, if anybody has any questions on that, I'll just go, kind of just go through this. My big part of my, of my, um, general ledger is a lot of the other funds that we have. We have what we call special revenue accounts. We have the senior lunch program, we have the school lunch, we have a lot of revolving accounts, reserve for appropriations, things you see at town meeting, and then donation accounts that have to be, those are donations, um, similar to where we just, um, Junies. Um, that would be specific, and that money has to be, is set aside for a specific purpose. It's collected and it can only be used for that purpose. So I thought I would just let, kind of run through and see different. Um, the first one is the COA lunch program. If you kind of look at that, it's, it's actually running right now in a deficit. Uh, the senior, uh, center actually just received a grant that's going, that's actually going to help them, uh, with the salary cost for the lunch program. We just got that, so this deficit will turn to a positive. Um, because she's just, they just needed some help in that area, and she applied for that grant and got it. Her salaries are costing a little bit more than what they're actually taking in for this, for the program. Um, I think she had, she ended up getting a $10,000 grant for this. Uh, the next one is the school lunch program. Um, the top half of this is their revenues, the bottom half. And what you'll see is there's a, there's a line in there that's really under transfer and adjustments. That's the balance from the year prior. All of these accounts, the balances roll from year to year. So the, the, the account, so then the school, on the school lunch person, they started the fiscal year with 2.9 million dollars. And then they go ahead and then get additional revenue and then expenditures. So at this point, there's 2.5 million dollars in that account in their school lunch. They're using some of it for some of the work that they're doing, um, in their kitchens. Some of it's being used for that. Um, that we didn't borrow for all of it. They're using some of that to help with their kitchens also. Um, the next ones are the revolving, the actual, what we call revolving accounts. And they're just little small, they're smaller accounts. We have insurance accounts. Um, if we have car accidents, the money goes into those accounts. We then, um, get the car, the vehicle repaired, this is where we use that. Um, the COA, this is where their day transportation support day. Um, the farmer's market, the gardens, cultural council, these are like some of the things, we call them the true revolving accounts. Circuit breaker for the school, like lost books. Um, I just want to go through some of their childcare, their out-of-school tuition, summer school. These are what they call the traditional, um, revolving accounts. These are the ones too, that some of these, they get, um, they get voted on at town meeting, um, that they can exceed a certain, certain dollar amount. Um, most of them at the end are all of the school, s- school choice and things like that, um, that the school gets to handle. And then the reserve for appropriation, those are, all those funds in there can only be appropriated at town meeting. You'll see that we, um, when we do the sewer bediments, um, we, we take money out of the sewer bediments to cover costs for a sewer project, things like that. These are all items that, that's what they're called, reserve for appropriation. If we have a sale of property, um, that can't be, that can't be, it has, certain sales of, um, town-owned property have to stay in this revolving account and then can be transferred for this, a similar use. Um, we have, um, any, some of the bond premiums that we use, we can, again, they have to be, they can be used to cut, to lower the debt use. The sales of cemetery lot, that's a standard warrant article we see every- standard warrant article. We see every spring that we take money from the sales of lots. We move it over to their cemetery funded to help David with any projects that he has over at this cemetery. So, that's what those those are only confused and only can be voted at town meeting. And then the last bunch is like again, is all of the revenues that are these are donated. And you if you go down the list, they're all the bike and pedestrian for the bike path, open space, any of the the planning board, if it's for a specific vinyl square for looking at I'm trying to get like if they're going to be doing sidewalk analysis or anything like that for a certain project that comes in, everything these have to be set aside. And that's why they're all specifically named what they are for and that's all they can be spent for. We same thing with you know, if it's for fire, police, if it's for prime crime prevention, anything that we get for those types of monies have to stay and be specific to be spent on those accounts. So, when an invoice comes in, I have to make sure that they're that's exactly what they're for is what they're what these accounts. And there's hundreds of these accounts. And this for the under the school, they have like a gift and donation account. Their transportation account is underneath their student activity. And the lastly is their turf fails. And that basically is just the debt that's on the turf turf fails at the stadium. We're still paying debt off that. And that's what that account is for. And so, it has to be specific for that. That's about that's it where we are. Is there any questions on the we're looking good. The revenue the auditors are going to be coming in for a pre-audit in about three weeks. I feel like they just left me and they're coming back. And we'll see I won't really have what are what free cash number is going to be. This it's just still a little bit too early. I really won't really know that number. Probably start getting an inkling of what that number's going to be in probably mid-June. I really got to see what the departments are going to be spending within the next month and a half or so before I can actually come down with that number. If I looked at what we are right now, we're looking at a closer to a two million dollar number. But again, there's there's still more expenditures to be made in the general fund. So, we'll have to really take a look at that. But more and more in June, I'll have a better idea of what we're looking at for for a free cash number.
And the final the final audit would be later this calendar year?
Yeah. So, the auditors won't come in and they'll they don't they won't come in till they usually come in the week after Labor Day. And but we're now because they have everything that first year ramping up is is a lot of work. But now that they have everything, they're they told us they would have the audit completed much quicker than they did this past year. So, we should be back into our old cycle. They'll come in in September, get audit reports to us by October and then come in here usually before the Thanksgiving timeframe to come in and give their their presentation to you on the audit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next up topics for discussion with state legislators and Representative Trahan's office.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the board's next regularly scheduled meeting in three weeks on June fifth that you're scheduled to meet with the town's legislative delegation. As of this point in time, Senator Barrett and Representative Barcello have confirmed their attendance for June fifth. Representative Cataldo sends his regrets. He has a previous speaking engagement that evening. And Representative Trahan expects to be in Washington at that time and I'm waiting here whether she'll have be able to again send an aide or an office rep to the meeting. And I've not heard back from Representative Elliott at this time. But with that being said.
Does Representative Cataldo intend to send?
I don't know.
A substitute? We don't know.
I don't know. I can check. He only has one aide. So, I'll check. I'll check to see if he'll do that. So, the the purpose of tonight's discussion is to for the board to consider what items will be discussed with the legislators at their when they return basically about six months from their last visit at the end of December. I obviously went back to the list that we had back six months ago. And so, obviously some new additions, the home rule petition, for example, that was just approved at Springtown meeting regarding the ledge road, commercial truck traffic. I put that on the list. Some items that we discussed with them still aren't resolved. For example, the chapter ninety roadway funding. It's been approved by the House. It's been a different bill was approved by the Senate. And here we are at mid-May and they haven't reconciled nor have they sent it to a conference committee. So, it's a little frustrating that we know we're going to get two hundred million, the same amount for the last dozen years, but they haven't reconciled the bill. So, at this point in time, perhaps one of the discussion items would be, you know, it's really helpful to cities and towns to have those monies released as soon as possible because our construction season ends in November. And obviously, some items are ongoing discussions such as PFAS. And then and then there was also an attachment regarding an item regarding National Grid tree removal. Our Public Works Director Christine Clancy has had some issues in terms of having them honor their commitments to replace every tree that's removed in accordance with the town's bylaw of one-for-one replacement. And and as a select board member of Virginia Crockett-Tim has noted in her message, this was also discussed at the Conservation Commission meeting recently regarding issues about National Grid honoring, you know, the concerns in terms of the work that they do in sensitive areas and easements and such forth. And and then the other one that I have that isn't on the list, but it's related to that, and some of you may have received an email, I believe that you did, it has to do with the underground utility project in the center. It's been a decade since phase one was completed around the town common. And then what happened was and why it paused was there was a deficit for Verizon, its portion of the cost of that project. And Verizon would not initiate the next phase of the project until it it recovered from its deficit for that project. And as we many may recall, the issue with the Verizon deficit is Verizon receives less than a hundred thousand dollars per year in funding because the funding source for the burial of the line Verizon lines comes from the surcharge on on landline users. And as we know, many people no longer have landlines and because of wireless telephone communication. And so, that's why that program paused for five years. At that time, we also asked National Grid to pause its surcharge collections because at that time, there was three million dollars in the account for National Grid. And there's really no limitations on financially for National Grid to to fund an undergrounding project through the center. The challenge is is that you can't use one utility's funding to pay for another utility's cost. So, National Grid monies can only play for National Grid's cost. Verizon has to collect for its own's cost and Comcast pays its own, you know, which is relatively minor. The challenge through the center is going basically down through the square through Central Square under the brook. And and that's a challenge in and of itself as as we've been discussed here at this table for over a dozen years. But the other big challenge is Verizon has major trunk lines through the center. So, if you've ever taken a moment and looked up at the utility poles in the center, part of the reason they're so unsightly is because those are major trunk lines that go out to Bedford and so forth. That makes that cost in the millions of dollars. And so, we we sort of been at this stalemate, you know, for a decade now because Verizon is not going to take on a project that costs millions of dollars to be reimbursed at a rate of less than a hundred thousand dollars per year, even though the statute doesn't speak to reimbursement rates. So, what what ended up happening was, as I mentioned, we paused the National Grid surcharge five years ago. And then about three years ago, when Verizon collected its deficit finished resolving its deficit from the center project on the common, they quietly discontinued the surcharge without notifying the town because we can't find any notice of it. So, that's sort of where we are at the moment. What we have done like three years ago when Cushing placed the work that was going in there, we've utilized some of the funding and were able to get that work done with the project applicant for the Griss Mill one. And so, that's why you see that little area there. But I I think this may be something that we may want to discuss with the legislative delegation. One is two reasons. One is how can we proceed if I know there's a still strong preference in the community to underground utilities. The other concern is if you don't proceed, how do you pay back? What do you do with the three million dollars of National Grid money funding? Because there's no provision in the statute about what you do with a balance, particularly a balance of that significant because obviously today's ratepayers may not have been the people who paid them, you know, going back now five years and beyond. So, that may be something we may want to discuss with the delegation in terms of because I don't believe there's any legal constraint. And again, we can pursue this further with our legislators and others of pursuing the projects of the center. We I do we'll add that we did look at the time because we had VHB as a consultant on that project. We did look at alternatives to undergrounding. One was could you just pull the lines out of the center and send them out through Summer Street, you know, go all the way around? That was very expensive, again, because of the amount of lines and the nature of the work. And the other one was we even thought at the time is could you go in the center but over overland like through the parking municipal parking lot area that you now know behind Oddfell's building? And at the time, those are privately owned properties and so forth. And I'm not sure, again, even the current owners of those properties, aside from the town, probably would be very excited about throwing utility poles and lines in what's now a residential property and the restaurant. So, so again, I just offer that as another topic for consideration because, you know, this thing is just now at the point of 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 not doing anything now. And it's been literally a decade since the work was done at the common. That's it. I think somebody was going to ask something, but I don't know if you have any other comments or.
Did Verizon make a commitment to Chelmsford or and or are they obligated under the statute?
They now remember, this was voted thirty years ago in nineteen ninety-one to do the center project. And it was expanded a couple of years later to do the entire center project. It what happened that what they basically said going back a decade ago was we're not proceeding with phase two because we're in we're in deficit from phase one. So, we we waited, we waited. And then and then.
I mean, how much of a deficit?
Oh, at the time, it was it was roughly it was less than a half million dollars, but it took them five years to collect the money because they're collecting less than a hundred thousand dollars per year. And then when I inquired with them with them saying, well, where is it? They said, oh, because what I have to do is they have to provide you an annual report of the fund, how much had been collected, what's the interest, where's it gone? And we stopped receiving those reports. And so, we followed up with them and they basically said, oh, we discontinued that. I was like, really? We didn't get any notice of that. Why did you? Because we thought we were building a small surplus, which again, we would look to we also look to going down Chelmsford Street. And and even with the state about could you because as was noted, there's going to be a major project in three years to go from Chelmsford Center to the high, you know, to Golden Cove Road, total reconstruction of that. And the cost of that were the latest revision I saw was over four million dollars total cost. And and basically, it will not be funded by the state. So, they're not going to absorb that cost as part of a project. So, that's sort of where we are.
I understand the second part where we could ask the legislators if we can't make this happen, help us figure out how to get our three million bucks back, right, from National Grid.
Right. Or.
What's what's the what's the primary action that we're asking relative to getting Verizon on board? What can they do?
Well, I think the question is is the statute needs to be updated because when it was drafted, again, the town initiated in nineteen nineties, the statute goes well before then, decades before then. It it hasn't kept pace with the times. In other words, perhaps it needs to be another funding mechanism for cities and towns.
So, they can recruit their.
To do underground undergrounding projects. So, maybe because the idea of funding any any telephone utility but landlines revenues is just it doesn't conform with today's realities. So, that may be a discussion point saying not just Chelmsford, but a bigger issue is how do cities undertake underground utility projects with the funding support from the utilities? Whereas utilities will say, well, let the town fund it, you know, the town can use its own monies. But again, the cost the cost is.
Is it possible for us to exhaust what we have in that fund and?
Well, we don't have any money in the Verizon fund. That's the problem.
You'd only you'd only get National Grid underground.
Yeah, that would be no good. And and really, you want to do the work in coordination because when you get the road excavated, they it is engineered simultaneous. You don't want to be burying, you know, it would do no good to bury just one utility in the center. And and the cable companies Comcast and they their their work is so minor, they're just, you know, a sidecar to this these discussions. But I think the discussion topic with the legislators are, you know, how can you advance municipal undergrounding projects with today's utility realities? Because obviously, landlines for Verizon landlines isn't going to work Chelmsford or anywhere today's world. So, that's just another discussion topic for consideration with them.
You think we should give them a heads up if we want to talk about it because they probably.
That's what I'm saying. We can I can I can update them whatever issue that the board has on that. Okay.
May I go back to the easements, National Grid? So, Paul, I think there were two pieces that came up with the Conservation Commission. One was what you cited and when they're clearing at or near our conservation land, how do we have better coordination and understanding of what the concerns might be with habitats or the conservation land? And then the second was the off-road vehicles and the ATVs going through the easements in disturbing wildlife habitat. So, do you see that there's a conversation to be had with the legislators on either or both of those? Like, just getting assistance with having National Grid work more with the community? Is that what we're looking at?
I I think the the former is is mutual, you know, I I think it's easy to have a discussion with the legislators legislators on what the utilities can control. In other words, their activities.
Right.
I know that the utilities themselves do not want the aid, you know, the off-road vehicles and others. And they're constantly out there with environmental police and others trying to prevent those unauthorized access to the corridors. And that's why they fly the helicopters and and other surveillance.
And it's not just the ones on town land either. They go through the other easements as well.
Yeah. I mean, I think we can raise that as as concerns. It's yeah, but it's 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 a challenge.
I guess what I'm struggling with is what are what are we ask? The first piece, I I understand what we're asking them for, right?
Yeah.
Help us facilitate better cooperation with National Grid when it comes to clearing easements. The second one, to your point, where National Grid currently doesn't have any control. I mean, I know where in my area, when people see ATVs going through, they call the police department or somebody local. So, what are we asking for on the second part? Is it is it that they look at legislation or?
Their security methods are also their own security methods and what can they do to enhance, you know, the the unauthorized use.
DEP enforcement when it's near habitats and wetlands and?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I was struggling with the second part.
What if you're only going to have two out of five show up that night? Do you think we should postpone it?
Well, I think I the problem is is when you stop moving later now into June, I'm not sure you're going to get you're going to have a hard time. And we we had we advised them months ago that we were looking at the beginning of June. So, like I said, I expect I I've not heard from Representative Elliott. So, I think you I think it's more than likely than not, he would be here. And then I can check what Representative Cataldo and and Congresswoman Trahan's office about whether they can send an aide in their in their place.
And should we look to to let them know what our target date is for the next meeting before we adjourn this one?
Sure. I mean, I would think probably all in the same time.
Sometime in the fall, right?
Yeah, probably late fall, yeah, November, December timeframe.
Before they go?
Yeah, because they.
They go back in in January?
Well, they'll go. Yeah, this is a midterm session meeting. They don't finish the it's a two-year session. So, they won't be they won't be beating the door down in December like they were this past year because it's it's a mid mid. There's no election this November. So, I think that their schedules should be pretty accommodating in the November, December timeframe.
So, you think skip right out till then till November?
Yeah, I would think so. Yeah. I mean, I think I mean, unless you think you need to have them because what's going to happen is they're going to recess at the end of July, then they won't come back till after Labor Day. And so, if we brought them back in like September, October, there's probably not a whole lot that's gone on in the legislature other than the budget between now and in October, quite frankly, November twentieth.
Yeah, I mean, October sixteenth is town meeting. Then we have the twenty-third, which we don't have anything scheduled. Then we have the sixth is the tax classification hearing.
So, either the twenty-third or the twentieth.
The twentieth. I don't have the twenty-third on this.
November twentieth.
Would that be?
Sure, I think that would probably work.
Is that is that the week before Thanksgiving or days before?
No, it's the week before Thanksgiving. So they're probably around, it would, you know, Thanksgiving's the 23rd.
So as far as this...
We can float the date and see what the reaction is.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Pat.
I was gonna say, as far as this list, I had, you know, a couple of things that we could talk about adding, and one had to do with environmental initiatives that are, you know, being discussed in, in a legislature right now. I don't have my tolist here, but, you know, a couple of them are the, there's one that manufacturers require them to, to be able to recycle all the, the appliances and whatever that are, that are replaced, so that they're less likely to go into a landfill or something like that. So I can't remember what it's called. And another one is the, one that Mr. Harrington brought up several months ago, where there was a consideration to add the small liquor bottles to the, to the deposit list. And I, I don't know if there's any discussion to adding water bottles to that list, but I would definitely encourage that too. I don't know, I don't understand why those aren't, don't have a deposit on them. And, and another one that, on a different topic, it kind of, Darlene kind of mentioned it, and it has to do with the motor vehicle excise tax. To, to look at the depreciation schedule that they have for, for motor vehicles, because right now, as Darlene mentioned, you, you hit a lot when you first buy a car, and for two or three years, and then it drops almost to nothing for the whole rest of the time. And maybe, you know, thirty, forty years ago, maybe that was true as far as cars, but not these days. I mean, now you buy a, a car with a hundred thousand miles on it, and you're paying, you know, sixty percent of what you paid for it new, what you would pay for it new. So I, I, I think that's long past overdue to be reconsidered, especially given that excise tax is kept by the community. It's not shared with the state. So that would increase our revenues.
Okay, so you're gonna put that together?
Yeah, and I'll send it out to them.
So is that bumping them from the June 5th meeting altogether?
No, 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 I'll proceed. In addition, that would be, I'll float the date of November 20th.
Just trying to make the mark, because our calendars fill so quickly.
Yeah. Okay, next is discussion, RFP for the strategic plan.
Yeah, in, in your packet, Virginia and I worked on the request for proposals, or, which was originally an expression of interest, and we've kind of been vacillating back and forth, but it was basically to put a document together, you know, if, if the board wished to proceed with obtaining proposals from parties who'd be, be able to assist the town in the development of a strategic plan. And so I basically based the product on the RFP that was issued for Shrewsbury, but then tried to give more flexibility, so in more terms of the expression of interest, in terms of, well, tell us what, how you would approach this. So we didn't sort of prescribe a detailed, you should do this, this, and this. It's more of, here's a general description of what's in a strategic plan, and then tell us, you know, how one might go about producing that, with the idea that any strategic plan is gonna have, you know, an understanding of the town's operations and, and information, and facilitating community input, and obviously defining clear goals and measurable outcomes. So that's what we have.
I would just add, Paul, that the outline that you formed this around was the one that we reviewed previously, that Paul and I had put together before we said, okay, let's go create a document.
Yeah.
And then Paul, when Paul drafted this, he suggested, instead of doing an expression of interest, just go straight to the request for proposals, because he, I think you weren't seeing much difference in terms of the response that we get, except for a level of detail. Or, and much difference in terms of how we would write it, is probably a better way to say it. So I would also just be interested if anybody sees any downside to just putting it out as a request for proposals, so we have some data from which we could further inform a decision.
So I said, a couple, one, one's a question. You refer to a project team, and I just wondered what the anticipation would be as far as when that would be created, who would be on it, how it would operate, and, I mean, would, would it be like a, a, a team that would evaluate these RFPs at a return? Or would they come into effect after that?
What, what we had said in the outline that we reviewed at a previous meeting, and I'm sorry, I don't have it up on my computer right now, were you referring to the steering committee, Paul, when we wrote up the project team?
Yeah.
So we said that the possible strategic planning steering committee participants would include the town manager, the select board, and then representatives from those boards and committees that have major plans. So it included the school committee, the planning board, the conservation commission, age-friendly, and the housing advisory, and certainly if they chose not to assign somebody, that's their prerogative. And then anything else that we would need along the way, we had envisioned, you would just bring other people in as appropriate, trying to keep the numbers down and manageable.
Okay.
So that was, that was what was on the previous outline, and we didn't really talk about changing that yet. I think we left that up for discussion with the board again, once we got closer to actually pushing an action button.
So you would anticipate that being formed after the RFP is accepted? Is that correct? Or as part of the, the group that would evaluate the RFPs? I mean, it's just kind of a timing thing, and I guess it don't need an answer right now.
Oh, in terms of, would the, would there be representative from this group to evaluate the RFPs?
Correct.
We didn't talk about that. My gut, my gut would, I guess it's up for discussion, Pat. My gut would say no, because I think, really, we would be like the lead board for it, so we're, we're evaluating the RFP response.
That's fine. I was just curious when I, when I started.
And then these would be members of the committee? I don't, Paul, or anybody else, do you have any thoughts?
So we would be involved in evaluating the RFP anyways, so you'd have, yeah.
Yeah.
You'd have a team, if not the team.
And so if you remember, when we initially talked about this, when we went over the outline, we said, let's put it out as an expression of interest, and just see what capabilities are out there, what kinds of ideas people have. And my assumption with an expression of interest was, you might get a rough order of magnitude type pricing. And the thought, the thought when we were initially thinking that was, those responses could help us to help inform and write a detailed RFP. And I think, you know, what, what, what Paul was sensing as he helped draft this, and what we talked about was, is that extra step of an expression of interest really going to help us? Or is it just an extra step that's gonna, you know, involve more time and effort that, for an incremental improvement? And should we just put this out? And then I, I had talked to Paul about, where do we post this, right? To, to make sure we get maximum response. So I forgot what you called the state board. I, COMBIs?
It's COMBIs, central register, you know.
Is, is the central register different than COMBIs? Or is that the same thing?
No, it's separate. Well, this, this COMBIs is, the central register is the Secretary of State's publication. COMBIs, it's a different agency, but it would go in both. But it's basically getting it out there and, and the...
And, you know, I just, for, for kicks, I went online and I searched municipality strategic plans, and there's a lot of municipalities and a lot of people out there, at least in the country, that do this. So I think if Paul hits the right pockets for the state procurement, we would get a sense for, my hope is that we would get a sense for what resources exist out there, and what's the range of possibilities.
And the only, the only other thing I, I noticed is, just having to do with terminology, just kind of a, a peeve of mine on a couple of the...
That's why we're looking at it, Pat.
The bullet points on, on page two. The first one, develop a clear set of goals articulated by citizens and identify. And then the fourth one, a workable plan that has broad citizen support. I think resident is a more inclusive term than citizen.
That's fair. Are you okay with leaving the, the language in? You, you had asked about the team.
Oh, yeah.
Are you okay with leaving it in, in that being the approach?
Yep.
Looking downstream, as, if we go out with this, and then we get some, some proposals back, how do we, how do we envision funding this? Assuming that it comes in around the same numbers that we thought, which was what, eighty thousand to a hundred?
Well, there's two thoughts. One would be town meeting. You have to go to town meeting to get appropriation. That would be in October. Obviously, nobody's gonna hold bids that, whenever we issue this, you know, you're really, that's why we've been going back and forth on expression of interest or proposals. The only other funding source that you have available to is your ARPA funds. That's, that's the, you know, you still have, you, you, that's an illegally permissible expenditure, so would, you could use that as a potential funding source if you wanted to.
Did you say it's, it is legal?
It is, it is, it is. Because you, we can, you can use the ARPA funds for a legal, any, any legal expenditure made by the town, which obviously master plan is a, is a legal expenditure of the town. So those would be your two funding sources.
So if, if it were funded out of the operating budget, we would need to get town meeting approval to do, to do that?
Yeah, we, we would submit an article on, on town meeting to appropriate monies to fund a strategic plan for the town, and, you know, we'd go out for debate and discussion and amendments, whatever, you know, just what town meeting does. And then, you know, it, it would certainly heighten the awareness and get the community buy-in from town meeting, as if that's, you know, a, a direction from the town. If the board uses ARPA money, it kind of remains here with less notification, less discussion in the community, but it obviously could, could advance sooner.
Well, and that, I mean, if we, if the board wanted it to go to town meeting, to your point, Paul, that would be an argument for doing this as an expression of interest right now, unless we were prepared to call a special town meeting.
Right.
Because the bids will have an expiration date, right?
Yeah, so we could do expression of interest, and basically note that in advance of requests at town meeting for funding, we'd ask you to express interest and give us your, you know, your estimated vision and cost.
Do a full proposal.
Yeah, yeah. A little of a full proposal. That's why we've been kicking it back and forth, you know.
Yeah.
I just, I mean, and I just took a quick look, like even at the numbers, so I would hope that you would get somebody to do this for less than a hundred K. But at a hundred, if you look at just the percentage of our operating budget for fiscal '24, it's like point oh six five percent. And that doesn't add in the capital or the school system budget. If you add the latter two in, you're talking about point oh five percent of the total town's budget. So, I mean, it seems like a lot when you hear the number, but for the amount of time and effort, it's a relatively small fraction.
It does seem like a lot, though, when you hear the number.
But it's, I mean, I'll just...
Well, the school committee spent over a hundred thousand on the schools.
They did. And it's, it's, it's part, it's not, I mean, that's what you can expect to pay for somebody who knows how to do this and do it right. Especially when there's all these, I'm sorry, especially when there's all these different siloed pieces that we've really been struggling with, how do we pull that together? And, you know, like, like Erin, when you said, like, development should be a priority in the town, Paul and Evan have brought that up for a couple of years in a row now, and like, we struggle, well, how do, how do we as a board help facilitate pulling that overall vision together?
Community input, gathering community input is something that we can't do.
And I think too, if you look at, if you look at the school committee, and like, how their goals and resources and stuff have been spent, spent since they put this in place, it provides those guideposts that really help simplify the discussions for the next one to three to four years, because you've already said, these are my priorities and how I'm gonna apply my people and dollar resources.
Yeah, I think the community's serving.
No, no, I know what you mean. The one thing I do think, though, is like, with the school, they've got their own thing going on, you know, so they kind of control everything within their bubble. But for us, it's kind of, it's us, it's the select board, it's the planning board, it's these other boards, you know, open space, master planning, you know, all these other that we kind of need to get buy-in, I think, from everybody. And that's why I'm thinking, I mean, my sense is that the best way to go about this would probably be to put it in front of town, town meeting.
To make sure the town is aligned with it?
Yes.
Well, in the Shrewsbury one, from what I remember of the conversation, they did an extensive survey from the public, with community feedback as part of it.
Right, and that's factored into here.
And that was something that I thought was, was particular, and something that, specifically that we can't really, that we could use professionals to do, to implement that kind of community feedback campaign, I think is a, is a huge...
Well, and, and I would say, just, the minute one of us participates facilitating something like that, we're contaminated, right? If you want to participate in the plan discussion, you shouldn't be part of the facilitation. So that's, so Erin would prefer to go to town meeting? Is that, you would prefer to go to town meeting?
Yeah, I think so. I, I think that'd be the best way for us.
It's a fair way to...
Yeah, I, I think so.
Can we go around?
Yep, sure. Erin, you, town meeting?
Yeah, sure, yeah. I would say I should probably go to town meeting.
I mean, I hadn't really given it much thought, but I mean, it, it is something that if, if we don't, then people are gonna say, well, you know...
Yep.
Yeah, I, I think so too. I think you'd get better buy-in.
I, I'm, I'm fine with that approach, and I think too, it's, we're gonna have other demands with the ARPA money.
Yes.
I definitely agree with that.
You know, you know?
Well, that's what I'm concerned.
And I think it would be responsible to go to town meeting.
Okay. George?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So should we then repackage this as an expression of interest and ask them for a rough order of magnitude?
Yep.
With an expectation that we would ask them to come back with a full proposal in the fall?
Yeah, because I don't think we need a special town meeting for that.
No, I mean, if we're gonna have one anyway, we could put it on there if we have the data.
Yeah, for sure.
But I, I wouldn't call it, just for this, I agree with you.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you. We'll, we'll get that out and keep you updated.
Okay. So, town manager report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got four items under this evening. The first one is, is the electricity supply aggregation procurement. The last meeting, I informed you, their window was on May 10th. On the, on the, May 10th, we received, I received this email about 11:30 in the morning from our, our consultant, Peregrine Energy. Myself, Christine Clancy, our Public Works Director, and our Sustainability Director, Christopher Haley, basically had a forty-minute conversation with Peregrine about the bids that were received, and how the town should proceed. And I'll sort of walk you through that, and sort of give you the sense of that forty-minute discussion. So the, the short answer, and you see the recommendation, the first question was, is how, how do we do, you know, should we proceed? And as, as you saw at the conclusion, their recommendation was to proceed, and they recommended a twenty-four month bid from Dynegy at fourteen point eight four three cents per kilowatt hour. They noted that while the thirty-six month bid was lower, it does carry one extra year of market risk and uncertainty, and they, you know, that you see on the report. So basically, that answered the questions in brief. Part of the discussion was, well, did, has the energy market stabilized? And the answer was, yes, it had. Around the time we had our, did our previous bid issuance, it was volatile, it had stabilized. So then the question became, okay, well, what, what, we only received four bids. Direct Energy did not bid at all.
Paul, just for the public watching, where, what chart are we on?
Oh, sure, okay. If you stick to that chart, they, they provided, they provided that chart there of the wholesale market. As you can saw, the market was relatively flat from 2014 through, really, the beginning of 2022. Then it spiked, and then now it's come back down, and then sort of the uncertainty that they have is, where will the market go in the future? So in terms of the, you know, the future delivery. So that sort of was, you know, we didn't spend a lot of time on that, because that was just data. You go to the next slide, slide four, it showed the standard default, and you can see there were four companies that were part of the solicitation, meaning that they actively outreach to, you know, make them aware that the proposals were out there in the market. Direct Energy, which had bid aggressively and, and it secured bids in municipal aggregation in recent terms, has basically withdrawn from the market over the last month, and it's unclear when they'll come back. And, but it's, it's seen to be temporary. The other thing that was insightful was Constellation would only bid for twelve or twenty-four months. They would not, they did not submit a bid for a thirty-six month period. First Point, which is a smaller company in the bid, you know, had the lowest bid price. If you look at the thirty-six month window as opposed to the twenty-four month window, they were fourteen point three one six. And then, then I asked them, and then Dyn Energy, you know, sort of, which was, they highlighted the fourteen point eight, eight six three, which was their recommendation. So we spent a lot of time on this in terms of, well, the current price is ten point zero four cents per kilowatt hour. Basically, you're going to see almost a fifty percent increase in the electricity supply portion of consumers' bill, which in Chelmsford is roughly about a three hundred and fifty dollar increase, or roughly thirty dollars per month. Or, you know, and then we said, well, what, should we look to the thirty-six month? And again, they, as a consultant, said, no, you know, they, in their sense was Dynegy really wasn't excited about thirty, doing a thirty-six month contract. And that really was more of a stocking number as opposed to, an indicative number as opposed to something they would really commit to. And so we were sort of left with first choice for thirty-six, you know, months at fourteen point three one six. And, and so we, we pushed back and forth. And, and again, in my mind, at, on the date of the tenth, you know, I had received a lot of the concerns that you had heard over that ten-day period of, well, should the town go for a one-year contract? Should the, you know, the town may not want to be boxed into a thirty-six month contract. That would prevent this issue from being back again. So at the end of the day, as, as you can see, I, I elected to go with the recommendation, you know, and, and again, heard input from the consultant, from Christine Clancy, from Christopher Haley. And we sort of all coalesced around it, although I and, and others, meaning on the town side, were, were tempted to use the fourteen point three one six for the thirty-six month with the notion, as was sort of said earlier by one of the speakers, hey, you know, why would you expect costs are going to go up, down in the future? And I think the thinking here is, is it is a volatile market that's still impacted by events, world events that are, that are taking place, obviously, on, on the other side of the globe, you know, with Ukraine and so forth. Also, the difference, if you go up past twenty-four months, you may hit see a different, there'll be an election in twenty-four months. And, and, and that could affect the markets as well, you know, not knowing who's going to be setting policy for the United States, because certainly we saw a sea change, you know, from twenty twenty. And then the other question was, well, why not just reject all the bids and go out again? Because we have till August. And the concern from the consultant was, this is the time you want to be bidding. Because what could happen in the summer is, it's always uncertainties unknowns, but they, historically, they've seen some issues with the summer market that, that conflicts with heat waves and, and energy demands in Europe and so forth. And they said, no, if you're asking us on a, you know, theoretical basis, what's the time to be procuring, you'd be better off procuring in the spring market than in the summer market. So upon all that, that's sort of weighing everything, I came with the, with the twenty-four month period. And then we, we had to execute the contract by mid-afternoon. And so the contract docs come over, I sign them electronically, and the contract was executed. The next slide shows you the, the options for the, for a greener option, which, which mirrors what we're doing now. And so you can see the pricing there. The, the difference is, is, again, this is basically the voluntary SREC price of one point five seven two cents. So that was, that would, that would, that will be the, the greener option, much like it's the same greener option standard now. So you've got the forty percent bump over. You see the bottom of the minimum state requirement for SRECs. At twenty-two percent increase into twenty-four in next year, and then twenty-seven the following year. And then the last page, the next page is, is the greenest option. Again, the, with a hundred percent renewable, again, closing that gap from twenty-two to a hundred and so forth. It, that would be seventeen point eight four nine cents. So that was, that was how it unfolded. And, you know, so that's where we are. Now, where we go from here is, I did notify the water district because the water district is a user on our aggregation plan. And so I've notified them of the.
Which water district?
The Chelmsford Water District. I was, I was constantly contacted by Andy Reed, the superintendent, saying, you know, what is the town's price? Because he was concerned about the cost for the district. And so once we got, you know, the bids in and executed, I notified him that afternoon. I don't know if the other districts use our aggregation or not, to be honest. And then the other question would be then, we, we would talk about moving from here in terms of notifying people of the change, because it, you know, it, the, the readings after, in November, and for the bills that come in after that are going to reflect, as we see, is going to be a, a, a material increase of from ten point zero four cents, you know, to fourteen point eight four cents, or almost fifty percent, or roughly, as I said earlier, about thirty dollars per month in, in their electricity costs. So that's, that's sort of how it unfolded. So I don't know if you have any questions in terms of that process, but, you know, we'd sort of tried to sort of land in a, in a middle ground area in terms of duration of the contract, recognizing the concerns that were raised.
Questions?
Just a thought?
Yeah.
So you mentioned notifying people of the change in terms of they can expect to see an increase. I want to go back to one of the comments made in public input, and I had actually been thinking about this anyway. When we were at the midpoint approach back in March, we talked about how can we help with over-communication on the ability to opt down? And I, I mean, I, just for my own refresher, I went back and I read the, the resolution that was voted on in April of twenty twenty-one to address climate change and form this committee. And I'm just wondering if it, besides notifying people of the change that, you know, we're getting into a new contract, can we work with the committee to look at what is the, what is the over-communication communication plan now to let people know that they can opt up? Because I sense some frustration. It's, it is hard to push the rope when you're, you know, a small team of whatever number of volunteers. And if there's some other ideas on how we could help communicate that Chelmsford wants to be a greener community, and here's how you might consider doing your part, and what the impact to the town might be, and even just some education on where the state is going, you know, as part of that. Because I, I think sometimes when you see something that says, oh, you have the option to opt up for green, greener energy, it's like, oh, well, that's nice, but like, I know when I read that, I don't understand the so what of it, except that I care about the environment. So I'm just wondering, is there something that the board or the town wants to do to help work with the committee on helping to, helping to see if we can communicate more effectively what that opt-up option is?
Oh, sure. Well, I mean, I, and forgive me, when I said notify the committee, I mean, clearly, any materials we put out, we're going to notify them of, of the three options within the plan, you know, and, and what, you know, the ability to opt up, to agree in a product. And, and I, we'd welcome working, and, you know, Christopher Haley and Christine Clancy and myself, we'd welcome working with the committee. I think perhaps once passion's cool, that might be a little more effective. Because I think what we have heard, and even heard again this evening, is I think there's a sort of this dismay about, well, does the education have any effect, you know, because of the paltry results we've seen in the past? But I'm, I'm perfectly committed and willing to do what we can.
And all I'm saying is, let's learn, let's learn from that and see if we can help, help it.
Yeah.
I mean, may, maybe it isn't a once-a-year notification, right? Maybe it's a public service announcement every three months, you know? Maybe it's putting some of those sandwich boards on town property and not just depending on residents to put it on to help raise awareness. I'm just making stuff up.
And there's been things, there've been things, you can even have ten at the farmer's market.
If we were thinking about over-communicating to opt down, let's maybe put it on an agenda item in the future on how do we help them over-communicate and educate on opting up? Because we are going to have to start moving at some point. And socializing that, I think, more. And if we don't start doing it now, it's going to be a step function in two years.
So Paul, anyone who has, who has opted up before will remain opted up, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, it's not with a new contract.
Yeah, everything, that was one of the reasons why we left the options as currently is. Because otherwise, it would have been, what do we do with somebody who's taken a forty percent? Now they've, you've moved him down to, you know, a fifty percent. Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
That was, yeah, you know, that, exactly. So definitely, we'll look at that.
Okay.
So we should just put that on a future.
Yeah.
Agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. Goal update?
Yeah, goal update. And, and I know you have in the packet, and I don't think any of us want to hear me go through seventeen pages of PowerPoint. So, but I'll just give a quick overview of really sort of what's different in terms of, you know, part of it is to give a quarterly update. Last, again, the last one we gave was, was basically back in December. First goal was sewer infrastructure. I think the thing to note there is, you know, we, we, we've had discussions before about the sewer planning and the sewer connection policy and monthly flow reports and, you know, the meeting we had back in December. But we're still awaiting the release from the state, Mass DEP, of the economic development funds that we were going to use for that pilot program for some pumps. So, and in fact, I've been, reached out to them again today because when two, when I reached out to them two weeks ago, they still didn't have an answer. And then that was about a month from my previous outreach. It's very peculiar because I had monies released on this economic development bill from other state agencies. So again, that's probably the thing to note there is that, you know, as well as the fact we went to town meeting and got funding for the continued improvements of the, you know, sewer project in terms of the pump stations, as Christine noted earlier in her report.
On the midterm Weston and Sampson bullet, how is that going with Littleton Road?
There've been no issues in, in terms of, of flow issues on Littleton Road. So fortunately, you know, we've not had any backflow issues, and we've had no flow constraints.
How far are they, how far have they progressed?
In, in terms of, that was the issue of checking it for blockages and so forth, yeah.
How far are they, have they completed?
It's my, I'm, I'll check back with them, but I've, I think they're pretty good. I'll check back and see where they are.
Paul, has anyone looked at what the, do we have a, a practice or an objective, like with respect to dry sewer lines with new developments? Do we want them to be put in in case like there's capacity in the future? Or is that something you can't really oppose both a septic tank and a sewer line?
No, the, the entire town is sewered. So, and what they didn't, when they sewed the entire town, they left the connection stub.
No, I'm saying for new developments where there's no.
Right.
There is no connection.
Right. So in the future, if they wish to come back, you'd have to excavate a line in, but.
Have we had any new developments?
You can't, you can't require a dry sewer line if you're requiring septic.
Yeah.
Okay?
Have we had any new developments since the moratorium that would require actually running a line? Are there any developments large enough?
Well, they're using, they're putting septic tanks in instead.
They're putting septic tanks in, but they're not.
Because there's no capacity.
Like, like, for example, when.
Like Jackson Road.
When you say a development, yeah.
Well, that's, that's twelve units, twelve duplexes, twenty-four units, so, yeah.
Okay.
But yeah, that's a good question. Like, for future planning purposes, if there is capacity, should we be requiring to?
Well, now, now you're putting, now you're putting an notice on development.
Right, you're in, and you're kind of in a, I think you're in a legal quandary because you're requiring them to put septic in because you don't have sewer capacity.
Providing.
And so you can't tell them to put a dry sewer line in too.
Double, double charge.
Be a double charge, and then people are already complaining about the cost of housing. I mean, just make it worse. Second goal is sidewalk and road infrastructure. Again, the most notable update was, was when Public Works, Christine Clancy, presented the sidewalk improvement plan back at the March twenty-seventh meeting, all with the twenty-three roadway construction plan. And then our request to Representative Congresswoman Trahan's office for the new sidewalk earmark along Parkerville Road. And, and then what we are doing is Christine Clancy and I are scheduled to go to the school committee next month to discuss with the school committee the sidewalk plan and to get receive their input as a stakeholder in terms of how the town should proceed regarding a sidewalk improvement plan. So that's sort of one of, you know, but certainly a key initial one that we wanted to touch base with. And obviously, we'll touch with VPAC and, and others. It's their June, I think Jay put us on their June twelfth meeting. Let's see if I got the right date.
That's a Monday.
I'm sorry, June thirteenth. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Wait, I want to speak to you. I'm sorry, June, June twentieth meeting. Yeah, June twentieth meeting, we're on for sidewalks.
Okay, good.
On, on goal number three, truck traffic, again, update since our last plan obviously has to do with the home rule petition with Representative Elliott, you know, restrict commercial trucks along Ledge Road. And then the most recent one since then was the request for the zoning, zoning enforcement officer slash building commissioner regarding the increase in commercial trucks along Ledge Road. That activity is going on currently as we speak. Commissioner Jose Negron has met with Town Council Paul Haverdy at the end of last week. And, and work on that is ongoing in real time. So that's ongoing on that. The ARPA funding, number four, I think you're very familiar with that in terms of the monthly status reports. As Christine Clancy noted in her last meeting, at the end of April, sixty-nine percent of the amount of allocated funding has been procured, and the rest is scheduled to be completed by the end of June. We, we continue our monthly meetings with the superintendent and, you know, Public Works Director, Facilities Manager and so forth. And, you know, we, we met, again, we could go last Friday, and those dates were, you know, we're very confident we're going to hit those benchmarks. Five on the budgets, again, you know, most recent update was, you know, as per by spring town meeting. You know, we, we saw the, keeping the board informed, the, obviously, the unanticipated increase in chapter seventy, educational, local aid. So, you know, so that's, you know, moving along. Number six was tax strategies. Again, all the stuff having to do with tax classification was done in the fall, including the town meeting actions to provide relief for residents from the senior citizen bounty, increasing it by five hundred dollars to a thousand, as well as the, removing the cap and increasing the funding on the senior citizen property tax work program. And then up until this evening, when we had Christine Clancy come in and to discuss the tiered sewer rate schedule, which again was meant to provide assistance for those on, you know, what it means. Number seven, the legislative leverage. Again, we talked about that again this evening. We met with them back in January twenty-third. And then tonight, we discussed our next meeting in three weeks, as well as a future meeting in November. Chelmsford Center for the Arts, obviously, we, we had Lexi in, and now the, twice for her updates. And now that Lexi's unexpected departure, Lauren Cochran has, has taken the realms. You know, she's aware and has the strategic plan. And I think we'll see her in a couple of months when she sort of gets her legs under her in the first quarter. But I think you, I think we've already seen improvements to the website and, and level of activities. Part of it is, is finally, we've got the flood damage mitigated, and so it's back operational. Goal nine, the civic engagement. Again, we've been, recent meetings about the survey of town committees and how we can address that. The upcoming event at the library in two, in two weeks, in June, I'm sorry, the second. And then your outreach to the civics classes. And then I, I gave my best effort on career day, which, and I was shut out. But we did do an outreach to Principal Murray. I know there were ride-alongs and the police cruises and so forth, but we offered, you know, spend a day at the town offices.
And the kids were like, we want to go to the police station. Sorry, sorry, Mr. Cohen.
Yeah, we ride with the cruises, but, you know, we tried, you know, you know, somebody might want to be, you know, a sewer engineer or something, or, you know, an assessor. But, so again, we talked about the June forum.
Paul?
Yes?
On the function in June?
Yeah.
Can, can you announce that through whatever mechanism that it winds up in the? Can, can you announce that through whatever mechanism that it winds up in the social media feeds?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we, we, I have that on my note about publicizing the event. You know, it'll go, what it does is we, we send out a newsflash on our website, and then that connects to Twitter and to Facebook, and goes out that way.
And, and we do have a, Erin, Erin created a flyer for it, and I.
Oh, great.
And that's like, that's a JPG file, so you can also use that.
And I have a list of people I'm going to send.
We don't have, like, a temporary sign or something that we can program for the, do, do we?
Yeah, we can, we can do, yeah, we can get sandwich board signs out there.
Put some signs up there.
Yeah.
And that's a JPG, so you can plaster that wherever, you can text it, you can social media print it.
Process improvement, again, many of these were done early in the year with the departmental gap analysis, with the full permit, full circle permit database, procurement training, DPW, and so forth, and we are still examining the town's personnel policies. And.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, sure.
I had two questions. On the personnel policies, is that something that is going to be brought to the Personnel Committee?
Yeah, yeah. And we're probably be, within the next couple of months, we're, we're doing a couple of things there. One is, you know, we're reexamining our policies, which is always a good thing, and then now that the contracts are done, we're, we're going to do what the school committee did, we're, we're going to do a compensation study for non-union employees as well, you know, just to see where we are compared to the market. So that's, that's ongoing.
And then on the departmental gap analysis, how many departments do we have roughly?
I mean, roughly, I mean, yeah, I would say roughly there's a half dozen major departments, police, fire, DPW, library, senior center, town offices is sort of the sixth.
Community development.
Yeah, that's, within the village, community development, you know, you conservation, you'd have, you know, you obviously get your financial offices, you've got your veterans.
The clerk.
Yeah, the clerk's office, and then you get Cemetery Commissioner is another player on that, so, I mean, I.
So.
I mean, when you, when there's a department head meeting, there's, there's, you know, almost three dozen people sitting around.
Right.
At, at the table, but in terms of major areas, it's like really a half dozen critical.
I, I think there's some really good things that were identified here and some that cross departments, like the permitting database. I'm just thinking out loud if this would be worth considering, carrying over, because it seems like there's always room, and if we have ten departments, like, should we be asking ourselves that question in each department every year? I think this is like a good start, but this is like the kind of thing that you don't just do once, right?
Right, and I'll be sitting with the department heads in the next few weeks to do their annual performance appraisals, and that comes up, what are the goals for the new year, and, and so that'll come up again.
Great, thank you.
Parks and Recreation, number eleven, that's, that's a, you know, bit of, bit of a lagger, and that was always meant to be in the last quarter of the fiscal year, in terms of how we can explain the procedures and uses for the town's parks and recreation assets. We are looking at, at having a Parks and Recreation webpage, you know, on our website to provide additional information, almost in a graphic form, that you could, we could identify the parcels, and then what are the restrictions and, and information about using those properties. So we're, we're working with GIS, and then how to affect that to something probably to go to the end of the quarter. And then number twelve, strategic planning, we just, you know, discussed that tonight, so I don't think we need to spend any more discussion at this point. And then thirteen, the final one, was the critical goals on the continued tracking and support. The first one, in terms of the Warren Pole Conservation Commission, obviously that, that opened and back in the fall in the parking area and so forth. Town Council, beginning of last month, did a legal review of the conservation restriction on the property, and, and my latest inquiry with David Kuntz is it's close, and so hopefully we'll have that done real soon, so that, that has to then get submitted to the state for approval. And then thirteen B is the fire stations, you know, we, we gave an update back at the end of December, and as Virginia knows, we're meeting again tomorrow, we're nearing the completion of its, of the committee's recommendations, and I expect we'll be in front of this board relatively soon. And then thirteen C was the Richardson Road PFAS. Again, we, we've had timely reports, and all timelines and actions for the plan have been submitted up to date. Then thirteen B, which is the final one, was the town common and extension improvements, and you're going to see the reality, well, part of it, you've already seen the reality of with the tree planting, with, when the Tree Committee presented with Public Works Director, and the trees that weren't backordered have been planted in time for the Arbor Day ceremony a couple of weeks ago, and then the small stage has been delivered to Public Works that will be used for the common and those type of events, and working with Pete Padula, we will have a sound system that's audible for the, for the Memorial Day observance, so again, you'll see that in two weeks. So again, I think we'll bring closure to that, to that goal, so. And then two last quick items on my report. One is, since our last meeting, we did receive formal notification from the Northern Middlesex Council of Government of the technical assistance funding for the current Fisk 2023. Most notable one was the MBTA zoning compliance. They've set aside twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for two hundred and seventy-five hours of NIMCOG staff time, and then they've also set aside thirty-three hours of NIMCOG staff time, which equate to three thousand dollars for an update to the town's housing production plan. And what they weren't able to fund was an update to the open space and recreation plan project and the comprehensive tree management plan, although they're helping us, and we're also looking at other options for funding for those items, so that's where that is, and, and again, you know, a lot of that you'll see coming out of the planning board in terms of the MBTA zoning, because the state is really pushing funding and, and efforts on that project, and then the housing production plan. And then the last one to note is.
Can I ask?
Sure, go ahead.
Can I ask, there's an MBTA event tomorrow, are you all getting those emails?
Yeah.
Is that something that?
You have to go.
That's kind of my question.
The MBTA Advisory Board?
Yeah.
Which is, the MBTA zoning.
Right, right, we're talking the MBTA Advisory Board. Oh, my gosh, well, we've been looking for how many years for a representative to that board? We've had no takers, because we're an adjacent community.
Uh huh.
So we, we were able to send a delegate, and we've been, I think we, I think we got so bad, we, do we still have it on our committee vacancies?
No.
No, we had no takers.
Really?
Because we're, we're, it, it's.
It has to be a user of the MBTA.
It has to be a user of the MB, of the MBTA.
Oh, and we have, oh, that's, that's interesting.
So, and, and then under the Commonwealth Sewer Rate Relief Fund, the 2023 distributions, John Suze secured nineteen hundred and ninety-three dollars. I know it's miniscule, but it shows two things. One is John's committed to finding every dollar he can to provide rate relief for sewer rates, but more importantly, it's because the town's debt on the sewer project is nearing, nearing an end. So that's why you see where the MBTA gets, so the NWRA gets one point two million, but it also explains why Tucksbury, who's done more recent, you know, received almost twenty-five thousand dollars, so that's where we're at under my report. Thank you.
Okay. Next is meeting minutes, Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes, five-one, 2023. Any comments on that? Take a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the regular meeting minutes for May first, 2023.
I'll second.
All those in favor? Aye, five-zero. And the next is the announcement of determination of releaseability of executive session minutes, minutes for release, April tenth, segments one, two, and three, May first, 2023, segment four. Okay, Select Board Liaison Reports, George?
I just want to acknowledge the passing of a young man way too, way too soon, police officer, very well, very well-liked and well-respected amongst his peers. Timmy Burke passed away this past week, and really upset a lot, obviously, a lot of people. I mean, he's just a great guy, and his services will be Thursday and Friday of this, coming this week, so he just, like, donates it to the family and his friends and to the department. He'd be a big shoes to fill.
Virginia?
Yeah, from the Age Friendly Committee, they just wanted to recognize Lisa Maroney. She has been selected or invited to participate in a natural, excuse me, a National Virtual 2023 AARP Livable Communities Workshop called Economic Development: Connecting to Opportunity. And it's an invitation-only workshop, and the quote was that they invited her in recognition of her wonderful job, including local business in the Chelmsford Age Friendly Initiative. So thank you to Lisa for her efforts with that. From the North Chelmsford Water District, they just want to remind North Chelmsford water-takers that we're on Level One watering, and if you could adhere to that, that would be very much appreciated. And from the Vinyl Square Strategic Action Plan Committee, thanks to the DPW on two major projects and for the public's benefit, one is that Varney Playground is now open, and with all the work that's been done, it's also ADA accessible, so that's a great addition to the community. And the other, thanks to DPW and announcement for the public, goes toward the Vinyl Square Transportation Improvement Plan. On May thirtieth, the community is welcome to attend a presentation co-hosted with Christine Clancy and Bridgette Myers, who is from Howard Stein Hudson, and they're going to be presenting the plans to be submitted to the Mass DOT for the future construction of the Vinyl Square Traffic Intersection. So that meeting will be on May thirtieth, and it's at seven o'clock, it'll be in this room, 204, there will also be a Zoom link provided, and Chelmsford Telemedia will be broadcasting the presentation.
Erin?
Yeah, a couple of things. Congratulations to Christian Zuzes, who received the Chancellor of Historic Society's Guardian Award recently for renovating two historic properties in town, the Fisk House in the Center and Liberty Hall and at Kate's Corner, so congratulations to Christian, very nice job. A reminder about the, the one book author will be in town on, well, no, won't be in town, will have a presentation, a Zoom presentation on May twenty-fifth at seven PM, that Charlotte McGonighe, who wrote Migrations, this is at seven o'clock on May twenty-fifth, and it is going to be a Zoom meeting only, so you do have to register for, for that at the library website. And you may recall, a few months ago, we had a discussion about a program that the Massachusetts Broadband Institute was doing to, to try to improve broadband infrastructure across the state and the region. There was a regional application, and NIMCOG shepherded through that process, and they were awarded a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar grant, so that will be used in the not-too-distant future to get that project off the road. And also want to mention another recent passing of Tony Zagzoug, who was a longtime building inspector in the town of Chelmsford. I'm sure anybody who's been here more than ten or fifteen years knew Tony very well, so he's going to be missed.
Thank you, and I have none. Given that, we'll take a motion to, what?
Sorry.
Give me that, we'll take a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Okay, I make a motion that we adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session for the purposes of strategy with, with, with respect to collective bargaining regarding the recent JLC mediation effort pertaining to reaching a new collective bargaining agreement with the Chelmsford Firefighters Union, the Chelmsford Firefighters Union's arbitration case pertaining to the scheduling of overtime, the Chelmsford Police Officers, the Chelmsford Police Officers Union filing of prohibited practice with the Department of Labor Relations relating to, pertaining to police detail pay, and a Chelmsford Library Union's filing of a demand for arbitration regarding the use of donated sick leave for parental leave.
I'll second.
George? Virginia? Erin?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye.
And will not be returned to open session.
I said that.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry, okay, yeah, sorry.
We are returned. It's eight-twenty-five.